People might not be here, but I will call the first panel and see. The first panel is Nick Tigerson, Amber Guyadi, and Boris Yusufov. If you could just identify yourself, yeah, just so.
My name is Boris.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. That's so helpful. Thank you. Oh. Okay, brief pause, please. Thank you. Okay, great. We are going to resume. Thanks, everyone for their patience. Okay, please begin.
My name is Boris Yusufov. I am the oldest son of Jewish immigrants to New York City. I am, I support a family of six. It's me, my two parents, and my three siblings. My dad works, my sister works, I work as an attorney in this city. We have a combined income of over 250, I assume, something like that. And yet, we cannot, they cannot move out from me. My parents can't move out. My sister can't move out, my siblings can't move out. Yes, because the prices are crazy, yes, because of inflation, but also, yes, because of predatory practices around the broker fees in New York. Over the last three years, different members of my family couldn't move out, and they tried, and they couldn't move out specifically because of the fees, specifically because of the fees. The opponents of the bill claim to be the champions of free market and free choice. Unfortunately, the market is only free if all the parties have leverage. In the current market, it's only the landlords who have the leverage, and they abuse that leverage, and they use the brokers to enforce their will. One of the opponents of the bill has made a big fuss out of the fact that the landlords are not here to oppose the bill. It means that they must be in support of it because it will raise the prices. Landlords are not there when I go to see the apartment. They have other people to do their bidding. We have Rabney here, who represents landlords, frankly speaking, and they do their bidding. They bring these people here because they don't like the bill. The landlords don't want to lose the leverage. The flexibility that renters will get from this law is immense. It's not the only choice. It's not the only solution. We require more, but this is an important step. It gives more flexibility to the renters.
Thank you very much. Okay, next panel. Gabrielle Guerrero, Tiffany Burt. Any of them here? Okay, not here. John Willis, Maury M. Purvin, Andrew Funk. If you wouldn't mind just identifying yourself, please, so we know who was not here.
I'm Andrew. Okay, this is on. Am I good? Okay, hi, my name is Andrew Funk. I'm a real estate agent here in New York City. I'm also a resident of District Four, and I'm in support of Intro 360. I've been practicing real estate for the past year, and I have 100% only done rentals, specifically on the tenant side, representing tenants and transactions. I think real estate agents can bring a lot of value to the transaction in terms of providing, you know, tenants' access to resources that they don't have access to without an agent, being able to do work for them on their behalf if they're not available to do so. Maybe they're moving from out of the state. However, those tenants that I've worked with have chosen to hire me and elected to utilize my services and agreed to pay me upfront. Tenants that I think are going through the process on their own and finding themselves backed in these corners where they are forced to pay the fees, I do think it's absolutely egregious, and I do think it's an extortive measure that landlords and owners are taking, capitalizing on this issue of supply and demand. That is where historically brokers' fees come from in this city, is we have an issue of supply and demand, and so therefore, we have a group of people that are taking advantage of that issue and utilizing it to essentially enforce fees on people that didn't ask for those services. Also, I would just like to point out, I think behind the curtains and behind the scenes, there's a lot of illegal practices and extortion that's taking place. As we mentioned before, you know, when landlords and owners are paying their agents, it's one month. When agents take that fee to the market and force a tenant to pay it, it suddenly becomes 15%. When we talk about agents utilizing that fee in an effort to prevent other agents working with tenants and, you know, not letting them come see the inventory, saying, "I don't want to co-broke with you. I've gotten too many direct deals, so I'm not interested in working with you." So it actually, it's, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, going to call the next panel. Delaney Maisel, Abigail McNeely, Lokeko Enzo.
Hello? Hello? Good afternoon, committee. My name is Delaney Massal. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me speak. I'm a native New York City resident who was born and raised in mid-income affordable housing in Greenwich Village. I am a teacher and actor and a singer who would be considered low-income. In order to move out of my parents' apartment, I am pretty much reduced to search for an apartment that is affordable and stabilized. I recently had an experience with a stabilized pre-war unit in Crown Heights, Brooklyn. The unit was $1,500 a month, and the broker let me know that because of the high interest they were in this unit, they were asking for a $5,000 broker fee. That is almost 30% of the yearly rent for this unit. He also let me know that many other people were willing to pay this, which intimidated me into not seeing the apartment at all. Less work for him. When broker's fees act as a barrier to entry, even for affordable units, and are dynamically priced because they are affordable, that is a predatory practice. This creates a hostile environment for artists and low-income workers who have historically been the backbone of this city. It makes New York into a city only the richest can afford. New York is already becoming a billionaire's playground with lots of people from out of state, out of country, moving in, driving people out who have lived here our whole lives. I am one of the people who has grown up in this city and cannot afford to even move out because of these upfront fees, being such a barrier to entry to getting into any apartment. It's hard enough to get approved. It's hard enough to even pay the rent. To have to pay upfront fees is simply not feasible. And for people who are artists, who are trying to make the city something less than just full of finance people, it makes it extremely difficult. Thank you.
One question for that, for the $5,000 fee that you were quoted, was there anything in writing on that? How is that communicated to you?
Through text.
Through text, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next panel, Celia Weaver, Gordon Lee, and Sharon Brown.
Good night, everyone. My name is Mr. Gordon Lee from Kings Brook County. You can also call me God. I'm a member of all the activist groups because I like to support important causes. And I was one of the children who was born when the country was protesting President Nixon June 23rd of 1973, as well as Vice President Gerald Ford. I was born in Broadbald County, Fort Lauderdale, City, Florida. And I came to Kings Brook County, New York City, in 1977 when they elected Gerald Ford, and, I mean, James Carter and Gerald Ford left office. And I grew up here under the Reagan presidency. And now, I'm here like everyone else because I also take issue with forced broker fees and rising rent. Not only I cannot afford it, but I don't feel that I'm, we don't feel that I'm getting, we're getting our money's worth. We often don't get the repairs that we need. Instead, that, you know, we get forms of nasty attitudes from landlords. You know, we call them for help, you know, some of them, and they just, they just are critical of us instead, you know. There's been talk about, mentionings of people who are physically abused by landlords. And, or something else, I don't know if anyone in here is aware of this, but I read the papers.
Okay, thank you very much for your testimony. Thank you. We are going to call the next panel Benjamin Bezal, Justin DiGiulio. Okay. Benjamin Bezal, B-E-S-L, no, and Justin DiGiulio? You just, okay, thank you.
I'd like to buy a vowel. Do you hear me? All right. All right, just taking some notes. You start the timer. I wasn't planning to speak today. My name is Justin DiGiulio, he/him. I'm a former owner of an independent brokerage. I started a brokerage in 2015. I've hired and trained over 1,000 agents. We've closed thousands and thousands of rental deals. We have a 95% plus five-star review rating. We have a very good review on Yelp and Google. Heard a lot of compelling points today made by brokers with very little questioning and engagement by the panel here. It was a little curious to me, so I started taking some notes. The city continues to push costs onto landlords, which is only going to continue to increase the cost of rent. To me, it doesn't seem fair whatsoever to be pushing the cost of a broker entirely onto the landlords. Advocates for this bill are saying that renters are forced into paying broker fees. When we've seen the reality demonstrated today, there's quite a few units that are no fee. To me, it's like saying you're forced to pay $60,000 for an Audi. Does not make any sense. Renters have options, and yes, the no-fee options are higher, and that's what we're afraid of, is that as we push that cost to landlords, the rent is going to increase. I've heard a lot about bait and switch, tenants coming to look at apartments thinking they were no fee and then finding out that they are fee. I've never heard of that before, and I've worked with thousands and thousands of agents. I think it's pretty clear online. That could be something that we could have a discussion about in a separate bill, whether the apartments are labeled as fee or no fee. I notice on Zillow and StreetEasy, there's a no-fee tag, but it does not tell you fee when there is a fee. So I can understand maybe some confusion there. I've worked with a lot of internationals, refugees, people with bad credit. The 2019 law was very detrimental to them. Either they are priced out, not priced out, but they don't have an option. They're not going to be considered, or they have to pay an extra cost to insurance or the guarantors or third party. I understand this would be a big councilman, I'm sorry, big councilman, I'm reading my notes. Understand it'd be a big win for you. It's a new bill. You're championing it. But I don't think that it's a good fit for the city. I think it's an agenda-driven bill, and I think there's a lot of legislation we could rewrite that would solve this problem a lot better.
Thank you. And sir, were you called in the panel? Your name? Oh, you were. Okay, terrific. Wonderful. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Benjamin Ellis. 20-year veteran of the real estate industry. I've watched multiple ups and downs in the market, and the fees that have tracked those ups and downs, they are tied to market economics. They are fully negotiable. I can't tell you how many times I've seen or negotiated my own fee or seen my agents negotiate their fees. I'm here to kind of offer up some solution, rather than to just repeat kind of what we've been hearing over and over again. I think we have two systemic issues. One is, we have a problem with affordability. That's the kind of pattern that I'm hearing in a lot of this testimony. That affordability is not, is a market-driven affordability, as admitted by the person sponsoring the bill, Mr. Ose. That affordability complex will not be solved by targeting a third party. The third party being the brokerage industry, which is there to, as a state-regulated entity, create transparency. The, the market will shift with the fee. The problem is, because of the affordability issue, and it is a very basic supply and demand problem, the city makes it very, very difficult to build housing. That is also mirrored simply in the Fair Housing Voucher forms, which should be a boon because they were just raised to accommodate rents more affordable for the people receiving those Fair Housing vouchers forms. However, there's no standardization of process, and therefore, the brokerage community is left to be the ones holding the bag, trying to navigate a myriad of different issues within these vouchers to create value for those tenants. If we could create a standardization for that, it would help with affordability because more people would actually be able to utilize the vouchers, which they should be able to use. The second part of this is affordability based on supply and demand. The city simply hasn't done enough to create more housing units. That is the only thing that will bring down rent. The 2019 law essentially caused a warehousing of units, driving prices up for renters. This law will have a similarly unintended effect, as well-intentioned as it may be. And I think for the purposes of how the city moves forward is a dereliction of their duty not to create incentives for developers to build more housing to address the affordability issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, one second. We have, ah, Zoom. Okay. Thank you very much to this panel. We're now going to Zoom panel. The first panel is Ajifanta Moreno, then Alexander Sekaly, and Christopher Leon Johnson are all in the first panel, so.
You may begin.
Do you see them on?
Hi, hello. My name is Ally. I live in Queens. I'm just an ordinary person who needs a place to live. When I was a child, I always dreamed of living in the big city, and eight years ago, I moved to New York City. I lived with roommates for seven years, but finally moved into my own place last year. I was shocked to learn that I had to pay a $3,000 broker's fee when all the broker had done was let me in to see the apartment. For most of the years that I've lived here, I only made $30,000 per year, about $18,000 after taxes. $3,000 was a huge sum of money for me when I felt like I did all the work myself. My story is far from unique. I only found out today that you can negotiate broker's fees. Naturally, the brokers did not tell me that. I just wished I'd had a choice about hiring the broker, and that's exactly what the Fair Act does. It gives tenants like me who can't afford a broker a choice about whether to hire one. All we want is a choice. The icing on the cake was when my broker couldn't even meet me to give me the keys. She left them at a restaurant for me to pick up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Just one second, please. Okay, is Christopher Leon Johnson on? Oh, there. Okay.
Yeah, I'm on. I'm on.
Great. You're up.
Hey, hey, can you hear me? Hello, what's up, everybody? It's Christopher Leon Johnson here. So I'm here speaking on, as opposition to this bill. I'm against the bill, Intro 360, and I'm going to explain why. Because the reason what's going on is, Chio Se, as a council member, I believe he's only doing this to appease certain special interests, such as Open the Earth for All and Transal, Open Plans, and all these other so-called tenant advocacy nonprofits that doesn't really advocate for the tenants to the right way. Like, and we got to keep real with this, right? I used to sell insurance 10 years ago, and, you know, like I said, as an agent, and, you know, the brokers have to make their money. The agents have to make their money, too. If you get, if you put this bill, let this bill go through, guys, the agents won't make a lot of money. The brokers won't make a lot of money because, yeah, even if the landlords are forced to hire a broker themselves, and they got to pay the broker fees, it's going to be passed on to the tenants. And you might not think that, they might not pay it at one spot right, at the moment, but they'll pay it time in and time out, and it'll build up. And there's no guarantee that a tenant will make those payments because we don't know how it goes. You can get a lease, and you can break the lease because of nonpayments, and you get litigated. So like I said, this bill is a bad bill. We got a housing crisis in New York City. The way you solve the housing crisis is building more housing, right housing, not housing that's going to benefit Open the Earth for All, where people pay $5,000 a month in rent. You know, these people that so-called advocate for tenants, like Cryer's Tenant Union and all these other nonprofits, they want to complain about paying $10,000 for broker's fee, but won't they, won't they get at Open the Earth for All for advocating to make people pay $5,000 a month in rent? But the thing is, you got, you can't, this bill cannot go through. I'm against the bill. You know, we got to support Rabney, guys, with this bill being killed. It's an ineffective bill. We have to solve the housing crisis the other ways. You got to pass, introduce bills to really solve the housing crisis, not introduce some bills.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I believe Ally Fanta Moreno has come back on.
It's me, that's me. Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Ajifanta Moreno. I'm the Advocacy Program Manager at Muslim Community Network. I'm here today to express my support and the organization's support for the Fair Act. We believe that this allows for housing justice in New York. It allows for fair housing access, and it allows for equity in housing, in the housing system in New York. Muslim Community Network has a Muslim women empowerment program which caters to Muslim women all around New York who make on average $20,000 to $30,000. When we surveyed them, we found that on, one of the top issues impacting the women is housing. Some of these women experienced domestic violence, and the only way to leave is if they are able to get housing. But with broker's fees, it makes it impossible for these women to get housing in New York. If someone is making on average $20,000 to $30,000, but required to pay at least $10,000 to be able to get housing, it is not feasible, and it is not possible. We need to make housing affordable in New York. We need to make it accessible, and we need to make sure the process is fair and equitable. And so for that reason, we thank Councilmember Chio Se for introducing this bill, and we strongly support the Fair Act. Thank you.
Thank you. And now there's another panel on Zoom, so I will read the names. Jared Gold, Miranda Copeland, Summer Omar, Neil Kujow, and Lucy Sexton. So I'm going to start with in order Jared Gold, if you are on, if you could please begin. Jared Gold.
You may begin.
Hi, thank you. Sorry, I wasn't unmuted. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the committee. So much of this hearing before the intermission felt like artisanal doublespeak. Anyone who has ever interacted with an owner-side broker knows that they, most or many, do not provide any of those high-minded helpful services that the advocates claimed they provide. I've lived in Queens for a little while. I've only paid two broker fees in my life. But while moving, I've interacted with dozens of brokers, and in all but one single case, the broker has offered nearly nothing to me. They opened the door. Several times, the broker told me that I could have the apartment if I paid more in the broker's fee, not more in the rent, just more in the broker's fee, just money straight to their pocket. Once, a broker told me that he had another offer from another tenant, but he liked me. So the no-fee unit became a half-fee unit. I don't know how to describe any of that, but straight extortion. I appreciate the hardship that the brokers would experience if this bill passed, but as the committee well knows, the status quo is not worth preserving simply because it is the status quo. And anyone who looks at the real estate status quo thoughtfully would observe that brokers who contribute so little to tenants but extort thousands of dollars from them will eventually be outmoded, maybe by legislation, likely by technology. And these inefficiencies and arbitrage-maximizing middlemen don't exist in the long run. They just don't. It's not the job of this council to bail out brokers who made career decisions based on the assumption that their racket would continue forever. It's time to move on to a more modern system of housing distribution. I urge the committee to adopt the Fair Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Miranda Copeland. Miranda Copeland, if you're on.
You may begin.
Can you hear me? I am here as a New York City resident to support the Fair Act. I have lived here for about six years, and my partner was born and raised here. And I have watched my partner's family be systemically priced out of their own neighborhood in Brooklyn due to not being able to pay ridiculous fees that are often dropped on them at the last second. And my partner and I have been unable to move out of their family home because we can't find places that are within our price range that come without fees. And it's just a very hard struggle, and this is one step towards making, finding an apartment in New York a little bit more equitable, so I support it. That's all for me.
Thank you. Next is Summer Omar.
You may begin.
My name is Summer Omar. I'm a public interest attorney, and I wanted to strongly support the Fair Act. As other people have already said, we're living through the most profound housing affordability crisis of this generation. Each day, you can see a new headline that sounds the alarm about the depth and severity of this crisis. More than half of renters are rent burdened. A majority can't pay rent and make ends meet to put food on the table and otherwise live their lives with some measure of dignity. New Yorkers can barely shoulder the costs of living day to day, let alone paying for the services of someone they did not hire. Each new fact and figure about how punishing this city is becoming should inspire bold, courageous action. Through the Fair Act, Councilmember Ose is answering that call to action. And you can see through all this testimony, clearly, New Yorkers are glad that somebody has the audacity to stick their neck out for us, not for lobbyists, not for special interests, but for the people that the city council has the privilege and obligation to actually represent. I'm hopeful that this bill will pass, and I'm also optimistic that for every other council member that's watching this unfold, you're inspired to similarly steal your backbone, appreciate the gravity of the moment we're living in, and fight for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Neil Kujow.
You may begin.
I'm unmuted. Yeah, good afternoon. Neil Kujow, I'm a real estate broker. And I'm, I'm for to stop the Intro 360. I'm here, I was there, and I'm hearing a lot. I'm here, I was there, and I'm hearing a lot of this testimony. People don't have to go through a broker. You know, you could look for an apartment yourself. You know? When I first came into New York, I've been in New York 20 years. And when I first came to New York, I found my own apartment by knocking on door-to-door and finding the owner to give me the listing, to help a family member of mine get an apartment. And I did that for myself, to find my own apartment. You know, I hear a lot of people say, "I found an apartment myself." No, these brokers did the, went from door-to-door, made the phone calls, called 100 numbers to get the listing, to go to the apartments and the houses, and take pictures, and put up, and to pay to advertise these units. The brokers are the ones that did the work. You know, I'm hearing that a lot, "I found it, I found it myself. I went online, saw it myself." But the broker is the one that did the footwork to put the ad online. And me, what I feel, what I feel that the reason why the rents are so high is mainly because of that 2019 bill. You know, because it's true. You have a lot of landlords warehousing apartments, and you have few vacancies, and brokers are charging fees. You know, like, they only have a few apartments where they could charge fees on.
Okay, thank you very much for your testimony today. And we have one more panelist on Zoom, and then I'm going to read through every single person who signed up, who we didn't hear from, to make sure we did not miss anyone. Lucy Sexton.
You may begin.
Okay, thanks so much. I'm Lucy Sexton, she/her. I'm with New Yorkers for Culture and Arts. It is a coalition of 400 individual artists, small organizations, large institutions. I'm here to speak on behalf of artists. The housing crisis for artists is critical. And artists are the industry workers of this town. The creative economy is 13% of our economy. These are your workers, and increasingly, they cannot afford to live here. Dance NYC recently did a survey, said that a typical dancer works four to five jobs, and has a household income with the other people they live with totaling $50,000. They also have to move more often, because there's so few apartments are instabilized. That means they are facing these huge, one-time fees. It requires access to capital. And you've heard other people testify today. They had access to capital because they had families that had money. This is an inequitable system, where a working kid, who is here trying to make their living as a dancer, who comes from New York, who comes from a working-class family, does not have that access to capital, and can't afford that barrier of getting those broker fees. And this is a real barrier, and this is a critical problem. In the last five years, we have lost 25% of our teaching artists have moved out of New York City. New York City without artists is going to be New York City without a creative economy. That is going to take $110 billion. That is what the creative economy generates. So this is a workforce worth investing in, worth protecting any way that you can. And of course, it's a larger problem. This is only one piece of it, but it's an important piece of it, and it's a real barrier. So removing that barrier will make it more possible for artists to continue to live and work and thrive here in New York City. Thank you for introducing this bill. We are definitely in favor of the Fair Act.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm now going to read through the list of everyone who's signed up but has not yet testified, to make sure we didn't miss anyone. If you are here, and you do not hear your name called, and you wish to testify, please go see one of the sergeants, who's raising his hand right there. Let him know, or if you're on Zoom, just raise your hand. Okay, bear with me. Shanawala, Doug Albert, Shannon Lucitra, Ruth Patterson, Jeanne McCune, Giampaolo Pernicone, Maxwell Fleishman, Shaquem Hens, Kiala Phi, Shriwadawa, Michaela Everett, Thomas DeLuca, Khadija Pickney, Sheena Sam, Ordeana Sabalos, Ra Landrum, Katie Wolf, Rodell Rodriguez, Zachary Thorpe, A.J. Parker, Albin Henneberger, Alyssa White, Charles McCreryan, Nikail Aror, Miranda Hernandez, Sparkey Reth White, Quinn Parker, Kayla Sinclair, Ashley Rivera Kobo, Benjamin Tamarin, Valerie Gordizenda, Imani Cole Palmer, Michelle Villagomez Mieto, Christine Sanders, Mildred Tompkins, Cassandra Smith, Quinivan Revat, Kiana Connolly, Antoine Besson, Regine Decossard, Michael Kala, Yin Yang, Nicholas Leamis, Desha Almodivar, Taschina Brignol, Rashida Lundrum, Reema Desai, Matthew Weisberg, Whitney Hugh, Izzad Tenweer, Winsome Pendergrass, Cynthia Novas, Marshall Madsen, Edward Segal, Miranda Copeland, Emily Hansen, Stephanie Potager, Robert Rummenyan. Okay. You didn't hear, okay. So do you want to just fill out? If you could go to the sergeant and fill a card out, please? And you can testify? Yeah, if you could just, if there's, again, if there's anyone here, and you didn't hear your name read, and you wish to testify, just please fill a card out, and then we will call you. Thank you. Okay, Amber Guedati. Oh, did I call? Let's go ahead.
Thank you, sorry. I'm a New York City resident. I currently live in Queens. Chio Se is not my representative, but he is today. So thank you. And I just wanted to say that I had a written testimony that I scrapped, because I've been here since 8:00 AM and listened to everybody. And I feel, yeah, I feel quite delusioned by the experiences that folks in the opposition have stated. I feel as though there's not great representation for the actuality of what younger folks are experiencing when they're moving between apartments or in the city for the first time. I can say myself that my partner and I have been here for eight years, and we have paid nearly $12,000 in broker fees alone, not moving costs, not first-last security, broker fees alone. And it has been devastating. We've been here the entirety of COVID. We've dealt with landlords, we've done the whole back and forth. And the reality is, every single time that we've had to deal with a broker, we can barely get them to respond to any messages. We barely get them to show up. It has been a nightmare. And I feel like we have not been straight up about this, especially for, you know, younger millennials that are here. I don't know what millennial has $10,000 to $20,000 in a savings account. It's just nonexistent, especially given inflation. Where in some neighborhoods, milk is $10, $11, $12 a gallon. It's just not the reality. So I wanted to speak for those that didn't get to speak today that are probably in that situation. There was also a comment made earlier about how brokers and people in the real estate industry were here on their own time. I am not at work today. The 500, 700 people that came out this morning and were outside, also were not at work today and missed out on pay, in the same exact way that the brokers did. So I think that that's an important thing to note, and I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And our last speaker, before we close the hearing, is Sharon Brown.
Hello. My name, am I ready? My name is Sharon Brown. I worked in the real estate industry out of New York City for Florida Properties. I'm noting also with one of the earlier speakers, it was done on Shavuot, which a lot of the Jewish people weren't able to come out, because it's a holy day. So let's take that into account when we're doing stuff with this bill. I also want to say, defend Israel, release the hostages, let Yahweh's people go, defend Israel. Okay, so the landlords, they need to make sure that the fees are upfront from the brokers between the two of them. But the landlords don't seem to have a big problem between what the brokers are doing. So the brokers need to make it clear what charges they have for people that are going to be using their services. They can't have hidden fees. If they're going to have fees, they have to let everyone know what is going on. It can't be hidden costs. For the tenants, they should know if it's going to be a sliding fee, if it's going to be a flat fee. If they want to find houses, people that are landlords should not turn them away because of the fact that they want to force them to go to a broker. And then some of the landlords are getting a kickback when people have to use a brokerage firm to come to them. Some of the landlords are friendly with the brokerage firm, so we have to make sure. And we don't want it to be abusive on all three sides. So they need to come to the table and do some kind of bargaining where it will help all of them. I've been on all sides of the argument. I worked in the real estate industry. I've been a landlord, and I have been a tenant. And it need, they need to have bargaining where they come together, no hidden fees, no hidden costs. That's what should happen there. Thank you. Defend Israel, release the hostages.
Okay, we're gonna, no, 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 we cannot. Okay, everyone has their two minutes, so, yeah. No, 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 we're not going to do this. Okay. First of all, I really want to thank everyone for their patience. We had unbelievable testimony today. I think no matter where one stands on the bill, I thought it was just so great to see the kind of civic engagement that we saw, where people stayed with us literally to 4:30. So I just want to thank you for doing that. We take all of this testimony incredibly seriously. People also have the right to submit testimony